Before we or when we start the meeting, can we, is there a way to know? Leila, how many people are viewing via the live stream?
Yeah, let me ask Josh, send me a text once we get rolling. He usually does, but.
Thank you.
Actually, I don't need to text him because he's here. So Josh, will you? Send me a note, either email or text and let me know how many people are on the live stream when you get a chance.
That's a good question, Catherine.
I know people really wanted to see the the names and faces again, which is part of the reason I think we went back to the Zoom. Format. So it's too bad that I know people have, you know, other ways to watch. It's too bad. We can't all of us see that, but that's okay. Just an idea of. Who else might be out there?
And actually, that might be a kind of a regular update in the meetings. That's good information to have.
Sure. I think we recorded on the minutes, but we're happy to do that. So he said six now and it usually goes up right after the meeting starts.
Okay, okay.
So, yeah.
Okay, well, it is two o'clock and so I'll start. This is the Mantegna City Council Workshop. In a workshop, we don't take input from the public. It is a time for the city council to talk together about projects and share ideas and thoughts during this period of time. Before we get into the agenda, I had promised in our city council meeting that I would share the information, what information we can share about the investigation. So I am going to read a statement and then I look forward to any council input that they may have in terms of next steps or information that they want to discuss relative to the investigation. In July, the city council voted unanimously to authorize an independent and privileged investigation of a complaint from a city employee. The complaint had been reviewed by the city attorney and the city's insurer and both strongly recommended this course of action to the council. As we have said many times and will say many times in the future, we take complaints submitted to the city by employees very seriously. The investigation has been completed. The city attorney has discussed the findings with the members of council and on his advice, as a privileged report and personnel matter, the specific findings and the information from the report will not be disclosed. Although the council will not be disclosing the findings or other specific information, we do intend to consider policies and rule changes in an effort to reduce the likelihood that similar concerns resurface in the future. We look forward to actively engaging the public as council works to update policies and rules for the benefit of the city. So Jerry, did you have something you wanted to share?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to clarify a couple of points because I know that there's obviously public interest in the investigation and the decision of council on the advice of the city attorney has been made clear. But I do want to urge people who have thoughts, concerns, questions. There's obviously limits to what we can tell you, but the people to ask are the members of the city council. The city council authorized the investigation on the advice of the city attorney and the city attorney has advised council regarding the findings. So in other words, this is a matter that is the responsibility of the city council, not of anybody on city staff to, to answer for. So if you have, if you have questions, they're better directed at the city council and in fairness to the two newest members of council, Catherine and Brad, they were not on council at the time. The need for the investigation arose. They were not advised by the city attorney or the city's insurer to conduct the investigation. They did not authorize the investigation. The only two council members left from the five who voted unanimously to conduct the investigation are Linda and myself. And so if there's, if anybody in the community needs to address anyone on council regarding the investigation, I think it's fair that Catherine and Brad not be asked to answer for those those actions. Linda and I have been involved from the start. The original authorization by council to do the investigation also specifically appointed Linda and myself to be the conduits between council and the city attorney's office. And so we have talked with the city attorney on numerous occasions. We've sat through numerous executive sessions. We've read the report and it's unfair to ask others to answer anything regarding the investigation.
Thank you, Jerry. I'd like to just take a minute and get some input from the council. We we've all reviewed the report and we certainly like to review our policies and council rules. But I'd like to get any thoughts you might have about what a good next step might be, particularly because we want to prevent this from happening in the future. Any thoughts or suggestions?
Could we, could we begin? And I don't know that this work session is the place for it, but we could as a next step to start to say what that work would look like, what the policy or other changes might be. And I assume there'd be some priority to those. And then just a reminder for everyone of what the public process is to do those kinds of changes. What kind of input is required and how we go about following up on that. So people so we and also members of the community can follow what's going on with that. So is there a is there a precedent that we follow based on past experience or will we be starting something kind of from a different angle than we have in the past?
I don't think there's a precedent for this. My initial thought might be that we might have somebody review the policies and procedures and the charter particularly, and then come back with a summary of those things that might be potentially changed for further discussion on the council. Does that sound like something that might be appropriate?
Yes.
Yeah, it certainly does to me as well. I, I think that you know, obviously we're not here to talk about the substance of the investigation, but I, I think it's safe to say that among many issues that were looked at were questions of, of potential violations of provisions in the city charter and the council rules and the city's employee policies, employment policies and all of those are within the purview of council to certainly look at, consider, think about the charter. Obviously, any changes to the charter would be a very significant undertaking involving a public vote, but I do think that the council can certainly as a first step review what has happened and whether or not changes in either the charter rules or personnel policies could minimize the likelihood of a repeat in the future. And so I certainly think that's something we can, we can start on. We just may have, particularly with regard to the charter, we may have a a very lengthy and complicated process on our hands if we, if we determine that, that there might be some changes made there.
I, I think in terms of the charter, Brad has mentioned a couple of times and I think it's come up several times over the past that the charter really is a reasonably good document, but there are certain things in there that could be changed. And so if we start making a list, it's, it's a huge process. It's a vote of the public. There's got to be a lot of study done to that, but if we start kind of making a list of those things that we want to look at when we do a comprehensive review of the charter, because I don't think it makes sense to do it one piece at a time. That would at least give us something to work with. And I hate to do this to you, Jerry, but would you be willing to look to go through the council policies and procedures and charter and come back to us with some specifics that you think we should be working on?
Absolutely. I mean, I do think it's, you know, fresh in my mind, having gone through this process with the city attorney's office and the investigation. I think that it would be a valuable step forward for the council to, to take under this review at this time. So sure, I'd be happy to do that. I guess I'd like just to give it some. You know, it's going to be one person initially doing some work that very quickly will, will benefit from a broader discussion. So I, I don't need a lot of time. I don't think. I'd like to be able to get to a fuller discussion about this at a work session pretty early in the new year.
I think that would be great. Thank you. I really appreciate that, Jerry. That's going to be some work, but it's really important. And I think the timeliness is critical while it's while it's in everybody's mind. I think it's, it's really time to begin that process so that we can see a positive result coming out of the investigation. Does anybody, Catherine or Brad?
For myself, I'm pretty sure I know the process and the public. Could you explain the process for updating the charter versus our rules and procedures for meetings? Cause I know that's two very different things.
That's, they are two very different things and I'm actually going to pass the baton to Leila. I know it has to be voted on, but I'm not sure kind of if there are other things that need to go into changing the charter.
Put me on the spot, Linda. I do believe we actually have to get it on to the ballot. So I imagine it runs similar to a ballot measure process. So just off the top of my head, that's, that's my assumption, which would mean we would have to come up with language that gets published in the voter's guide, et cetera. And so then that would have to happen during a regular or I think a mid, we can do a mid-season election. But it has to happen on election day. So, so that's the step for that. And I I imagine we would have a number of steps to take with the council to get to where the language being proposed is is there. And so we may want to do something like pass a resolution to then kick it to the ballot. So we may want to do just so that that's documented and be clear in the record, what's being changed and how it's being changed in the process. So so that's my assumption. I certainly will verify that. If there's something different, I can let folks know at a, at our city manager update in a, in a future meeting. That's my assumption.
When we talk about it at the workshop, it would be good to have a specific process at that point. So we know exactly and how much time ahead of them. And I'm, my own personal feeling, just mine, is that it's a big lift and we may not be doing that in the immediate future. But it's, but it's really something to begin to think about. Catherine, did you want to say something?
I just think that sounds reasonable. I mean, there'll be some, and we don't know yet. So we don't know what the balance is going to be. And it could be that through other, other rules and procedures and guidelines, a lot of the, a lot of the gaps can be closed. So you know, we just wait and see, I think, and then we'll, we'll understand how much work can get done. Is a less heavy lift and then what the, and I know I'd just be very conservative and cautious about the charter. I mean, that's designed to not be changed frequently. That's not designed to be changed quickly on one experience. So well, I'm sure we'll, if that comes up, we'll have to have a thorough discussion about that and.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, in Oregon, we've seen a lot of examples of where the constitution gets things in there that, you know, shouldn't, well, you know what? I shouldn't go down that path. We will, we'll look at that seriously. I mean, it's a serious thing. And so I think employee handbooks are one thing, the council's rules and procedure are another, and then the charter is kind of in a category all by itself. So when we see what that work looks like, I, I can, it's easy to imagine we'll have some shorter to things, shorter term things we can do and then some longer term things that'll require more deliberation.
Absolutely.
And one more question that comes to mind because I know the comprehensive plan is something that we're looking at, making updates to as well. Is there any potential correlation between that and the charter? That we need to do them in parallel or that we do one before the other?
You know, I don't believe so, but sorry, Linda.
No, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I don't believe so. No, I don't believe so.
I, I agree, although I think, I think we should treat charter reform on the same level in terms of being deliberative and careful and thoughtful as the comp plan. And so I think Catherine has it right. We're trying, we're trying to immediately address some things that we've all just gone through that were the subject of the investigation some extent, and we can make some of those adjustments in council rules very easily, certainly compared to charter changes. With the charter, we may discuss at our work session if there's first things that need to be worked on in the charter, specific to what we've just gone through, but that should be, I think, parked in a lot, waiting for a bunch of other charter changes to be considered. You know, well before there was an investigation, we had had conversations in the community and on council about things in the charter that seemed like they need an update. So there's, it's worthy of a, of a good look, not a good overhaul, because it's a solid document and it has in fact gotten us through some choppy waters. So I think that the charter does not need to be thrown out. It needs to be. Yeah, yeah. But it's gonna, it's gonna be a longer process for sure.
Okay.
But the, the rules and procedures are something that we could present a change or in addition to, and then it would be a resolution passed by council to make those updates.
Right. That's right.
Yes.
Right. Easier, easier done.
And that may give us some room to adopt some of the more immediate concerns quicker than a change to the charter.
Any other comment or input on this? Okay. Well, let's move on to dark sky lighting. And Sergeant Mike and City Manager Leila, you're on.
Yeah. Well, actually I'm gonna, I'm gonna kick this over to Mike and Max, although I'm gonna run PowerPoint. But staff, I just want to give credit to and shout out to the staff, both Max and Mike. They have spent a significant amount of time digesting the information that we got from a number of folks in the community with respect to the dark sky ordinance. So they spent all the time reviewing the comments and summarizing them. So I think they'll be pleased to see what they've come up with. With that, and I'll interject as needed, but I think Mike has got this sorted. So.
So this is coming from survey results, is that?
Yeah, yeah. And Mike will go through all that with you to kind of give you a history of where we've been since we started this journey together and where we're looking for direction from you all as to where we should go now that we have gotten what I think is a really good sample of folks to provide feedback to help direct our next steps. So we'll, we'll end with that and then Mike go through the presentation and then staff will have a couple of questions for you and then just want some clarification on next steps. So can you see my screen? Am I sharing the right one? Is it?
Yes. Yes, I think that's where we start.
Okay. Is it a full? I can't tell which screen's lit up right now. It's a full screen. Okay. All right. I'm done.
Okay. Well, first of all, thank you. Thanks for having me. Thanks for your time. Thanks for your patience and thanks again to Max for really being the technical and research guy. But moving forward, yes, Leila, you can press some buttons and I'll try to keep with you as we go on. So real quick, as far as the timeline, we did meet back in August of 2023. That was during a regular city council session where the issue of dark sky or the concern or the topic of dark sky first was first talked about. Moving forward and to September, that was a work session where we had presented what a citywide draft would look like. I believe city council at that point said, well, we, we like the direction. However, it'd be good to hear feedback from the community via survey. So there was a survey, a survey that was put out to the public. And then of course that brings us to today. So if we talk about some of the survey results, but and even before we get to that, we are, we're still operating under the short-term rental only sort of exterior light ordinance, ordinance 10-3. It's always been this. This is still what we're operating under. We sort of wanted to expand on this to make it citywide and what would that look like? So from the like survey results, if we move forward, we had about 250 respondents of approximately 600 full-time residents. And if we talk about who sort of answered, a large percentage of course were homeowners. Some were business owners. There was a few renters and Leila, if you can click. And then one more. The overall percentage of folks that were in favor of a dark sky ordinance, that turned out to be about 67% of the people from the survey. 22% were not in favor and there was 11% that were uncertain, maybe because of lack of information or they had additional questions. But overwhelmingly of the 250 folks that answered, 67% of those people were in favor. The most common comments from the folks that were in favor, of course, actually in sort of in order from greatest to least, the comments were piling up wildlife and stargazers. Those were folks that were really interested in a dark sky ordinance. In order of importance from greatest to least, at least some folks were very concerned about light trespass. They would like to see a city ordinance that would maybe curb some of the light trespass that comes from other neighbors and other properties and sometimes vacation rentals, yet sometimes full-time owners. Safety and security was a huge, also that was a top ranking comment. And then it kind of trickled out from there, but those would be, I would say, the top three or four comments. If we move forward, the, the folks that were not in favor, they gave good reasons and good comments on why. As far as the folks that were not in favor, safety and security, that was their first and foremost reason for not being in favor of taking a dark sky ordinance for short term and making it citywide. They really felt that maybe safety was compromised. And you'll see later that we changed some, some literature from the original draft to accommodate those folks, myself as well. Too much regulation, a lot of comments from folks saying, hey, this is my property. This is sort of like my business, but they just didn't want too much regulation. Cost was a smaller factor. Overall, not a huge factor, but of the folks that were not in favor, that 22%, a lot of those folks had mentioned cost being the reason. On the next slide, you'll see this was the original proposed dark sky ordinance and it was kind of funky getting it onto the screen. So we sort of have half. And then the second page is on the right half and I'm not sure how well you can see that. But more importantly, the next slide will show the changes that we made to that original draft after we received results from the survey. So if we can kind of just run through some of the changes that were made right under the definitions, fully shielded light. Now this really dictates how light shines from your property onto other people's property or up into the atmosphere or out onto the street. You can see there that it's a pretty lengthy definition, but it was pretty easy to just clean it up and say, hey, if we have a fixture that allows no light to trespass above a horizontal plane through the lowest part of the fixture, then that's going to really still provide safety for walkways, driveways, side yard paths, et cetera, but really just taking out some of that definition and just leaving it to really just to what we needed it to say. We totally took out a definition for Kelvin as, as far as a measuring device on how bright lights should be. Because whether they're bright or not as bright, the proper fixture would allow that light to be utilized and still not commit light trespass, whether that's your neighbors or the stargazing folks or wildlife, which was of course a concern from the survey. We didn't do anything with landscape lighting, lighting, light trespass. We sort of just limited that down to light falling where it's not wanted or needed. So if, if we have light falling where it is wanted and needed and it's fully shielded, we can still achieve that sort of need where, where folks are still feeling safe and other folks are not being trespassing upon as far as their neighbors' lights. We didn't feel that we needed to keep the definition of owner as far as the owner of a property. We kind of all understand that. So again, maybe just a redundant thing in there. Moving over to the prohibitions, this is really where we were able to address some of the folks and their safety concerns. We took out the pretty much the time limit of what certain lights could be on. Some folks have, they have a need to go outside in the middle of the night, maybe for pets or something. They just wanted safety and concern. And I, I feel that if we take out these two items on the prohibitions, we can still achieve that where everybody wins. Patio lighting is one other provision that we struck out shall be prohibited between the hours of 12 a.m. and 6 a.m. I just spoke on that a little bit. And then under the exemptions, we just cleaned up some of the language that addresses the American flag, which is pretty much a federal policy. It just read a little bit funny and I think Chief brought that to my attention, but we were able to clean that up pretty good. So this would be, as you see it, a result of the survey and, and the, the comments, this would be a draft that I would suggest staff or excuse me, council take a look at. But before you make any decisions, of course, please hit us with any questions. And on the next slide, we have questions for you, something to, to think about. Should, should there be an exemption for the commercial zones? And also not exactly light ordinance related, but if this does get adopted, a compliance timeline and a grace period before all of the sudden we just start going around and talking about monetary penalties. But just those two questions for sure that we would ask council to consider while looking at the newly revised draft as a result of those survey results. Leila, did you have a comment at this point or anything to add?
Well, I think let's, it'd be good to have a discussion around this. And then I think ultimately the outcome we'd like for today is just direction from council on. You know, are we on the right path? I can put the ordinance language back up. You guys haven't had a time to actually digest that. So my suggestion would be get your initial feedback on what you've heard today. Staff would revise that ordinance. We come back for a quick discussion at a work session to make sure we're on the right track. And before we start going down the path of having the city attorney review the ordinance and getting it keyed up for you to adopt. So would it be helpful for me to either stop sharing or to put the proposed ordinance language back up?
Go back up.
Okay.
Okay.
I forgot to say.
That's okay.
Please.
There you go.
So thank you, Mike and Max for the work and the improvement of this in my eyes anyway, from the last time we spoke. And I am glad for the time that went into looking at the public's comments about this, because I mean, there's a range and I did personally start off with more concerns about security, especially at night. So I think some of these things get me a little further down the path. I did want to ask about the language around light trespass. Dee.
Okay.
What I seem to have learned from listening to the, the original presentation and some of the public comment and things like that was one of the things that has, you know, nothing to do with wildlife or night skies is just the neighborliness factor of where the light shines and you know, is it come on my property? Is it on your property? And what effect does that have? It, and again, I'm not, I'm not going to be the strongest with legal. It, and again, I'm not, I'm not going to be the strongest with legal language, so looking for some help here. Um, but light falling where it is not wanted or needed seems way too vague to do anything about. It doesn't address. Who wants it, who needs it? Who wants it and needs it may be the person who's got a big floodlight out and feels strongly about it, and the neighbor might feel very differently. So how would you? How would you go about enforcing that or even have people know what that means in terms of their responsibilities under this ordinance?
Yeah, a good question. I, I, I would, I would suggest, uh, especially, I mean, you had mentioned specifically a floodlight, um. Under E, under the prohibited uses of lighting, um, if we talk about floodlights. Um, of course, a floodlight could come on and certainly shine light, um, uh, it would fall where it's not wanted or needed. It, it certainly could happen that way. However, um, if we talk about floodlights specifically, uh, motion detectors or timers on those lights. Um, would allow, uh, the safety of somebody to use a floodlight. Um, uh, for a specific amount of time, of course, it's on a, a motion detector or, um, uh, like a timed fixture. Um, as far as it's falling where it's not wanted or needed, well, is this going to be a problem case by case pay, uh, basis? When you talk about how do we enforce that, I think that would be just a conversation between, um, the two parties and. And, uh, code enforcement guy or, or law enforcement guy. On how do we, can we, how can we adjust this light that's falling where it's not wanted, not needed? Again, complaint-based. Um, concerns would be addressed first. Um, but ultimately, it, it's, it's really just getting everybody to sort of, uh, uh, land on the fact that there is a problem. Or at least agree on the fact that there is a problem and how do we solve that? Um, when you talk about light falling where it's not wanted or needed, it's pretty obvious if I roll up at night. And half of somebody else's house is lit up, uh, and it's not necessary, I guess, common sense would sort of dictate that. Conversation between the two parties and, and the responder. I don't know if I answered your question, but, uh, I was really keying on, keying in on the fact that you had mentioned floodlights.
Yeah, and I, floodlights was just an example because it's such an obvious one. I just. What you say makes sense and what you refer to, which is not surprising, because it's how you. How I know you look at things, you know, somebody's has a concern, will you? The first thing you do is you get people together and you talk about it and you try to figure it out, so, um. Just being aware that, you know, we've had some, uh, circumstances or some places in town where people weren't really able to do that. Uh, with each other, leading to some problems, so. I'm assuming that. Awkward, I'm assuming, you're assuming that with the code enforcement officer in place. We now have, and this regulation in place, we now have a little more of a base to. Work through those kind of conversations when there's a difference of opinion between neighbors on light and light encroachment.
Yeah, it's happened, it's happened, um. Very rarely, and of course, there's been, uh, you know, an extreme, uh, an extreme case as well. Uh, I, I just, I just feel that if we are able to prop ourselves up against this. And, and say, you know, where it's not wanted or needed, I suppose, uh, a conversation or an argument even. In favor of saying, well, I, I pay for the light, I want it there, but ultimately, it's, I, I, I think it just comes down to, um. What's reasonable? That's, that's kind of my approach on, on anybody that would have maybe a difference or a question or a concern about somebody else's. Property or light or parking or, or whatever ordinance that may, um, bring together two neighbors, uh, with opposing views.
Okay, I want to give somebody else a shot at it before I ask another question.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Mike, is there any consideration or do we have the ability to include anything in this ordinance or the definitions? Regarding lighting supplied by T-Pod. The reason I ask is, for example, at the end of my street, there's one of the large. T-Pod lights that not long after I moved in. Burned out, which I was quite happy about. And, uh, when T-Pod discovered it, they replaced it with one of the more energy-efficient LED. Streetlights, which is extremely bright. But I do notice, uh, the street parallel to me at the end of their block. That light has a shield on the back of it, whereas mine does not. So to me, that sort of. Falls into some of these, I, I know it's a safety thing because it's public lighting for the streets. But there is, um, encroachment in some cases, but, uh, when they put the new light in, I just go outside and.
Yes, unfortunately, you're uncomfortable. Yes, uh, uh, there's been.
Get that one.
There's, I was going to mention Dan, go ahead.
Yeah, so Dan's actively been working with PUD to get these changed up and, um. To move from the kind of that Cobra head style light. Um, to be changed to something that's dark sky compliant, so. Um, we're still working on a few adjustable lights, but part of our strategy would be when, when and if this is adopted, that we would. Work with PUD to do that, and I think, um, Dan's here, he can chime in if he wants to, but I think PUD has been a good partner. In, um, doing that with us, and that was my experience in another city where we implemented, uh. Some dark sky, um, compliant lighting, PUD is usually pretty helpful in that sense. Is that right, Dan?
Yeah, Tillman PUD has been working with us. They actually, we started this process. I want to say over a year ago, uh, council had interest in dark, in the dark sky, and so. The Cobra heads are the ones that they've gone through and replaced, and so those are the dark sky compliant ones. There are a few adjustables, they call them. And essentially, the adjustable part is how it attaches to the pole. To make up its angle on, on how it hits the ground. And so they are going to be working through getting those replaced. There are shields. Like you've seen on there, and so we can ask that some shields be placed here and there. To help with the, the, essentially the directional part of the lighting. But they, I want to say they had over a hundred and some lights they replaced for us that were not scheduled to be done, but they said, you know what? Manzanita treats us really well, so we're going to go ahead and take care of those. And they completed that, I want to say about three months ago, that whole, that whole change-out system.
Cause, Dan, is there a quick question? Is there a list as far as priorities? I mean, um, uh, or do they just sweep through and, and on their own investigation?
They, they have a list of what's out there and they, they took the whole list of what was in our city limits and said. We're making them dark sky, and then we're working with, I'm working with, uh, Dave Wimpy is his name with Tillman PUD. On the adjustables and where we can see about getting some of the lenses and stuff. And the lenses will be essentially the, or the shaders, sorry. Shaders will be essentially by, essentially driven by folks saying, hey, I got light that's coming across. And so then they can go out there and apply the shader.
So maybe folks like Brad and Brad's situation can get on a list, or is it just, uh, submission and then wait?
Just, just contact them, um, you can call their general number and they ask for, uh, a shield to be placed to help the light from essentially moving over.
So is that something, Leila, is that something the city can do? We could just request folks, uh, contact us and then we can turn over a list to PUD or?
I think it's a good public service announcement to, for folks that if you're interested, you can go ahead and call the PUD and just kind of cut us out of that loop. Um, and probably get more direct service, and I do want to acknowledge, you know, Dan and I talked about this a year ago, we've been listening. Um, and the relationship with the PUD, not only are they good partners, but I do want to give credit where credit's due and. Dan's a great partner to work with, and I think that that's likely why we, we got what we got, um. So I just want to credit Dan for that, but yeah, I think folks, if you have something in your community that's troublesome, um, PUD is usually pretty great about. Um, trying to address that and those shields are available and, um. Yeah, I think that's the most expeditious way to handle it.
So Brad, does that answer your question?
I need to call PUD, yes.
And they do, they have a service guy, just from North County, who you'll see him sit, moving around by himself. And that's all the stuff he takes care of. He's a super nice guy. So, and does enjoy a good hot cup of coffee, so. Offer him, maybe even faster.
Link, link.
Um, one more question that comes to mind now that, uh, we got some answers about the public lighting. Is, and I may be jumping ahead, if I am, please tell me. Do we have a process or have we thought about how a citizen would report? My neighbors put up this do light, it's shining in my bedroom at two o'clock in the morning, is there going to be? An email address, a specific number or rotary to push something like that?
So on the website, of course, there's, uh, code enforcement email, uh, we have, uh, the police department phone number. Uh, you can always find one of us, uh, just by asking around, but as, as far as, um. As, as far as a website, yeah, the city has a website that they can leave concerns with and. And if they want to remain anonymous, that's one thing too, and if not, of course, um, there's a non-emergency number to get ahold of an officer immediately. Um, but yes, just the standard ways of, of reaching out to the city. Um, in which we're, there's always somebody here as, as far as the police department, so we can feel those as well.
Yeah, and I could just add to that, uh, my, he pretty much said this, so I'm just sort of explaining it again, but. Uh, again, a public service announcement, if you do have any kind of code-related issues, the website does have our code enforcement officer's number on it. Um, he'll get back to you if he's on duty. If not, he'll get back to you as soon as he's not on, back on duty. Uh, there's an email, you can email code enforcement. We have the Manzanita Police Department's phone numbers also on the city's website. And so if you leave a message, our officers check that frequently and, uh, will get back to you. So this relates not only to dark sky, it could be a parking violation or something else. Um, that's the best way to get through to folks. If you do need immediate assistance, you can call non-emergency. And they'll reach out to the officer on duty, but I think that's applicable to, um. Any kind of compliance-related issues.
So Leila, is Max's number under the police department or is it under the? The, the, front of the. Website?
I think it is. I think it's under police, right?
I don't know if that was the phone number.
Well, at any rate, it's a good opportunity to. Uh, when we get to the point of if this gets voted in and we pull it out. It's a good opportunity to remind everybody because we're constantly reminded that everybody doesn't know, so. You know.
Right, right.
And letting people know what to expect in terms of, uh, response time is always nice as well, so.
I was trying to share with Leila too, actually on the city website, under the departments and police. There is a nice form they have on there that's for code enforcement complaints. And that's, that's the same form you would use for dark side lighting, but also. Complaints and things like that, if you see your neighbor out doing landscaping in the public right of way. Throw, throw that out there, uh, but things like that, that's like, it's an excellent form and I suggest anybody take a look at it.
Yeah, it seems more appropriate to go through code enforcement than police at this point, I think. The more we can focus on code enforcement, I think the better. Um, I did have a quick question about A and C, I think, and, and one is. Uh, general lights and then the other one is lights, lighting, uh. It sounds like pathways that you go up or shrubs or things along those lines. Can we use the same language in both of those as, so the light shines down as opposed to up?
As far as, uh, the definitions, Linda?
Yeah.
You had mentioned A, fully shielded, and C, landscape lighting?
Right.
Okay, so.
You go, sorry, can you go back and bring the document up? It'll just help make.
Sure.
Thanks.
And so, uh, Linda, to address, I believe I'm addressing a question if I say. That, um, landscape lighting would be, um, lighting designed to illuminate walkways, trees, shrubs, ponds and other landscape features. But it still falls underneath, uh, the fully shielded definition. No light should be. Uh, traveling, uh, above that fixture.
Okay.
And so what you asked, the question you asked was, should we use the same? Like verbiage or, or language in, in A and C? Is that your question?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, it seems to me that, that we certainly could. Um, w- we just, whether it's landscape lighting, um, or, or patio lighting, we're just, we're just looking for that type of fixture. To, to, I mean, for it to not travel above the horizontal plane from the lowest part of the fixture.
What if we added something on C that said, um. Uh, landscape lighting must be fully shielded as well, see point A.
I mean, it wouldn't hurt to, I mean, we could certainly add that if, if that's a suggestion, uh. I mean, it doesn't hurt to add that, no.
Or just something as simple as land, landscape lighting is required to be fully shielded as well.
Yeah. We can make that. We can propose some language that reflects that. I see the concern, um.
I'm making note right now. As well as, uh, Ms. Catherine's note. Okay. That can be done.
So before we get to the, um, questions you want to pose to us on the next slide, so I just want to make sure I'm clear. So from the conversation from Dan and, and Leila. As I walk around, anything within the city limits of Manzanita now, all of our street lighting is compliant with dark sky. It's just a matter of some people might want an adjustment to a shield or need a shield placed on it, but otherwise we already are compliant, is that correct?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay.
There's just a few, they said that they still have to change out. But all the Cobra heads, which make up a huge portion of all the city lights, are compliant.
So Dan, is Ocean, is, I know Ocean Road isn't our responsibility, but are they dark sky lights along Ocean Road?
Yeah, I might have phased that one into the request.
That'd be great.
You can, so pretty much any of the LED lights that are out right now there, those are the dark sky compliant ones. The adjustable ones from what Dave told me are still some of the old sodium, so they have a completely different color. So, and that's kind of that, I want to say the warmer color light than the, the bright white of LEDs, but the LED ones, you'll notice. Like if you come down Oak Street, you actually notice that. The light is actually, well, as Mike is saying, as the light shines down, it's not shining up. And you will see that actually on those lights as you come down some of the steep roads.
Okay. Thank you.
One other thought is, uh, Mike, I know you and the rest of the team is really good about generally enforcing things via. Education. Oh my gosh, maybe you didn't know you can't have this type of light or it has to be on. That sort of thing before we start going into a violation or monetary penalty. This may sound a bit common sense, but I think one of the compliance things, and maybe we put it somewhere in the ordinance is. To comply, you've got the ability just to turn that light off. And not use it anymore.
Go ahead.
I, I, so I'm not quite sure what Ben is saying, so.
If, if someone has a huge light high on their house and it's not compliant. And they are told that it is violating this ordinance. Should they not have the ability to say, I'm going to take the bulb out of it or I'm not going to use that light anymore? Rather than being required to expend cost to change that fixture out?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I just didn't know if we need to specifically mention that or that's just sort of along those lines of enforcing by education.
Yeah, sure, just part of that was just offering, uh, uh, many, many options. One to include, hey, you can just not use the light.
Okay, any other, any other input? On this? And, and just out of curiosity on this, uh, on the ordinance, um. Will it come back to us in council to make a decision? Or are, are we at that stage where, say in January, we would be looking at making a decision on this ordinance?
Well, I think, uh, we still have one other question we wanted to make sure we covered with you, um, res- respect to commercial districts. And then I think it would make sense for you to have another opportunity to review this, um. When the language is finalized, we have one small edit to make to the definition of the landscape lighting, for example. Um, I, I prefer council to be a hundred percent like, yeah, we're, we like this. Then we'll ship it off to the city attorney to review. And if there's any substantive changes, then we actually would come back to a work session and walk through those substantive changes with you. There aren't, then I think we would then prepare it to, uh, go to a regular council meeting for a first meeting. So.
That might be March. So.
Yeah, it's sort of schedule-dependent, um, I don't think we'll have to spend a whole lot of time at the next work session if we. Yeah, it's sort of schedule dependent. Um, I don't think we'll have to spend a whole lot of time at the next work session if we. You know, get there today and get direction to proceed. I think it would just be a quick review, but we want you to have a copy of the ordinance in your hand. Um, a few days before the meeting to be like, yeah, we're, we're solid with this and go ahead and proceed, um. So, so that's process wise, what I would suggest. I think the outstanding question we still have is related to. This applies citywide, so there's no exemptions for. The commercial district. That came up in a couple of conversations with y'all, and so we didn't want to give that short shrift and we wanted to get kind of clear direction. From the city council on that. I will say that, um. The areas that emit the most lights, uh, tend to be the commercial district, so that. Uh, unshielded lighting tends to be, um, along Lenida. And so just uh, back to be aware of, but we do want to hear your thoughts on that and staff will refer to council on how to approach that. So if you decide that you want the Lenida to be exempted. We would just include that geographic area in the exemptions and then put that into the draft ordinance that you'll see again.
I'd like to know what feedback we got from businesses along Lenida. I'd want to know their. Opinion and thoughts about it way in advance of forming my own about it.
Well, we didn't talk to them directly. Um, we did get, bear with me here.
Yep, uh, it, I believe there was ten responses, which represented about four percent of the respondents from the businesses. Um, uh, from the business owners in regards to uh, the comments uh, section.
And did you break down that they were interested? And did you break down what their responses were?
I have, uh, I would say maybe thirty pages of responses. And I did not include the specific responses of anybody in this presentation. Uh, but I'd be happy to make those available, um, before you take any steps if you needed to.
Well, I don't know that we can actually tell you a business owner said X. Um, because the responses are for good reason, you know, they're.
Right.
They're limited.
I did not mean to misspeak there.
Yeah, I just want to make, no, it's okay. I just want to make sure that, uh. Um, there wasn't any, um, expectation data we could provide that we actually don't have. Uh, we did not go outdoor to door and talk to these folks. Um, I did have a conversation with folks at the Hoffman and. Actually, their lights are already pretty much dark sky compliant and they're downward cast on the building. Um, so. You know, I think that it's, it's a question of whether or not. You think that we can achieve the goal of the ordinance with those, with Lenida being exempted from that. So you'd have the rest of the town dark and then one strip would be different than that.
It's, it's totally hard to see how they could be dark sky compliant.
Agreed.
Well, can I elaborate on that? Because that, that suggests that they, there's a heightened, I guess there is a heightened need for. Security lighting in the commercial district. I mean, it's not as if our commercial district is, you can't get a drink at two AM, I don't think. Uh, it's not, you know, it's not happening late at night, so. Is the lighting downtown? It, late at night, all about security, and if so. Talk to us a little bit, Mike, about um, security concerns on Lenida at night.
Well, that's exactly it. It's, it's, um, uh, typically if you were to go anywhere, um, a commercial zone is definitely going to be. Lit up more than, than a residential neighborhood. Part of that reason is security. Part of that reason is just that, that's what you would expect with uh, business lights, uh, business, uh, employees. There before, during, after hours. Um, I, I would say absolutely it's security. A lot of businesses have cameras and cameras don't really work well in the dark. So if you have lights and you have uh, security systems that include cameras, it's, it's going to be hand in hand for sure. I, 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 off the top of my head, uh, reading the responses, uh, the, the business folks are not in favor of a dark sky ordinance. That is citywide, including that commercial zone. Uh, safety being the, one of the top reasons that, that folks were not in favor. Um, in fact, it was the top reason, um, that folks were not in favor, part of that twenty-two percent.
So do we have, uh. I'd be surprised to learn this, but maybe, uh, maybe I should be surprised. Do we have a lot, do we have people working, a lot of people working, uh, a night shift on Lenida?
So, uh, I know that folks get into a, a few of the businesses before because they're baking goods. A few of the folks get there very early because we have delivery trucks as early as six and seven AM. And there's got to be employees there to receive those goods, those goods before the business is even open.
Is there, is, given the, the needs that we're talking about, is there, is there a way to tailor the ordinance so that. Instead of giving the entire commercial zone a pass, can we give certain businesses a pass?
Well, if those businesses were subject to change ownership or change business models, um, um, we, we may be. Making those changes a lot in the future moving forward. Uh, I, I don't know if we would, if.
Well, I, 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 I hear what you're saying, but it's not that I would be, I wouldn't be proposing that we. Designate individual owners and say, you get a pass, uh, but rather create definitions around. The kind of, uh, business, uh, lighting needs that get a pass versus, um. I mean, I, I guess I'm having a hard time believing that, that, uh, everybody up and down Lenida. Would have a, a difficult time with, uh, complying. And, but you're convincing me, and I'm not, it's, it's an easy, it would be easy to do that. You're convincing me that there are certainly some. For whom it would be a hardship, uh. It, I guess I'm just wondering if the, the way to do it is not, not to give, uh, a pass to the whole street, but to carve out. Exceptions to the ordinance that would clearly apply to a relative few enterprises.
Maybe in the core downtown area, is that what? So, so I, I just want to share some history here, so, um. Not that long ago, uh, the, the owners of the businesses in the core district. Did not have any lights. It was dark, and so when you came into the city of Manzanita, the downtown area at night, it was, I mean, it, it was pretty bleak. And one of the things that a former council, uh, worked on is really encouraging. The lighting, uh, on the outside businesses in the downtown core area. So we really encouraged them to brighten it up, and if you go downtown today. Uh, it's, it's as, it's a very welcoming area. I mean, it's bright, it's safe. Um, it's comfortable, so as strongly as I believe in dark sky lighting, and I really do. I, I do see an exception to the core downtown area. I think. When you get up close to the Hoffman Center, maybe not, but, but in that core area, I think that is important for visitors and. Uh, I, I personally think it's important to keep those lights.
I agree with Linda on that. I think it also, um. I mean, it, we got it, I'm trying to make sure I'm not thinking about this as somebody who lives here and already knows how to get around. Knows what streets don't have lights on them, and I was just trying to walk down one after the Christmas holiday. Uh, the tree lighting we did where there was like no light to get around, and I live here and it was like, uh, so. I think Lenida still is the, the main way people come into town. If they're coming from somewhere else, if they're here to stay at one of the lodging places along Lenida. People come in day and night, all hours of the night, so it's also the experience of people who are, um. Arriving here who are not, uh, who are not residents, and I do think about safety. I also think about, and Linda alluded to this, I think about just the feel of a, the town when you come in and. I mean, not, I'm not suggesting like, you know, I, I doubt we're going to get to the floodlit billboard stage on our commercial street here and. In downtown Manzanita, but having some of that lighting on. Being able to see a little bit of, get a flavor of some of the businesses, um. At night when you're coming in, it's, I mean, I know I sound like a, maybe Pollyanna here, but it's cheerful. It's like a welcoming, um. Kind of feeling, and I, I feel that way when I'm coming in from someplace else at night too, so. I, I'm, I'm far more inclined to think about an exemption. I'm also for Lenida, because I'm also thinking about. You know, we have the town, in the end, it's not that big of a town. It's a small town. So we go to this, you know, to make some impact on the environment and also for neighborliness. But for people who are wanting to observe the stars, the stars don't care. Whether we have lights on or not, it's the people who want to look at the stars. And they're generally not going to be on Lenida Avenue to do that. They're going to be in a home, um, somewhere, so. Maybe we could balance that out a little bit by having the commercial district, uh, exempted from this. So, I'm still, I'm working on this one. I'm working.
Something to think about, you'd mentioned billboard and, and that makes me think of advertising, you know, there is, uh, there is different times of the year where it gets dark at four thirty. And we're still open, so now, I mean, not that they're advertising, that's their sole purpose of, of, of downplaying, um. Uh, the ordinance, but the fact that they can be seen. And another group of businesses on Lenida, or as Linda mentioned, the core portion of, of Lenida. Um, again, it gets dark at nine thirty PM in the summer and four thirty in the winter, so, um. To make them exempt, wouldn't hurt.
Uh, Brad, if you have something?
Yeah, with the, uh, the exemption along the lines of what we've been talking about, I think it needs to be very specific. What area, Lenida between this block and this block, instead of just saying all, all businesses, because there's businesses. Plenty of businesses that are not on Lenida, but the other thing I thought of is, let's just say, for example. You've got a business on Lenida that's. Presumably exempt. What if my house on Dorcas backs up to that business and I've got a big floodlight in the back that's coming into my bedroom? I wouldn't like that.
Well, I mean, I think that's why we're, we're struggling here because our, uh, commercial. Core is not like downtown Portland. Our commercials core is surrounded, uh. You know, by, by residential streets and neighborhoods, um. And so, I mean, I, I, I hear the arguments and I certainly, you know, I'm inclined to, to. Understand this unique needs of, of businesses, but I'm, I guess I'm just not convinced right now at least that. The answer is to, uh, carve out a whole chunk of geography and say the ordinance doesn't apply i- in that zone. As opposed to saying, within that zone, the ordinance doesn't apply if these two or three or four conditions exist. And maybe as a de facto matter, that's what would happen anyway. I mean, I, I, I don't think everybody. Like, I don't think, I, I wouldn't think a little real estate shop on Lenida that doesn't. Operate in the middle of the night needs lights on. Maybe they do, if they do for security, then. Uh, Mike, you'd be the best one to tell me about that, but I, but I'm just assuming that not everybody on Lenida has the same lighting needs. As, um, some other folks on Lenida, and so if we know that and we can tailor the ordinance to accommodate the ones that need it. But don't give a pass in general. I think it's worth a try, but.
Yeah, I think staff would probably look to council to help develop that criteria, um. We could also spend a little time and come back to you, but I think. I, I hear both sides. It would be helpful to see a zoning map to kind of see where the commercial district is within the city. Um, so you see, okay. I'll see if I can get the right screen out this time, but I just pulled up. Arc map and. Right, do you see the zoning map?
Yes, yes.
So limited commercial, so you know, that would be a question I have, is the hotels on the beach, um. Right down here, and then this is the C one zone, so this is Lenida. I put the, I hope you can see the tax lot lines, okay? Uh, and then the areas that fall, and so this is Underhill Plaza right here.
Yep.
Um, and the adjacent properties, and then, um, this is Manzanita Lumber over here. And so that's, that's what you see one in the, the LC, the limited commercial zones look like. And so I think we would either do, what I feel like, I'm just going to summarize what I feel like I'm hearing, and then you guys. Keep talking through it. Either you do it by zone or district or geographic boundaries, which would need to absolutely be defined specific. You know, if it's not these zones, then it's along this street, or you redefine criteria that are clear and objective. Right, so that they're, they can be applied in an understandable way. Because it's the businesses that will be interpreting this, and so it needs to be very clear what we're asking for, what, what would require them to have that kind of exemption. So.
Go ahead.
Oh, nothing.
So one of the things that, uh, based on what Jenny was just saying, first of all, I'm looking at Underhill Plaza. And part of the vision of Underhill Plaza is to make it a kind of community place, and I can see concerts potentially going on in there. That, and like a, a Christmas celebration, we had lights all over there, so, uh. How, how do you, how do you, you, you don't want them on there all the time, but. A permit to, uh, have lights for a celebration is, I mean, that, that's another kind of issue if we talk about all the commercial zone. It becomes problematic, I think.
Well, seasonal lights are exempted, so our lights would be exempted, so the Christmas tree would be exempted if, um, folks put, visit. You know, holiday lights, I shouldn't say Christmas, there's lots of holidays around this time of year. Um, those are all exempted.
With our celebration.
Permanent lights, sorry, I'm gonna.
Okay.
So yeah, I think either option is great, um. It would just be helpful if you do kind of have some, you know, can give us a little bit of directions, uh, should we go back to the drawing board and. Come up with some meaningful criteria and come back to you. We can do that, but if you did have any. Um, suggestions or recommendations for us to consider, uh, that would, that would be helpful.
Well, I just don't, you don't want to, uh, kill a mosquito with a shotgun, so, uh.
Right.
So I think we need to understand, uh. Who in the commercial zone would be adversely impacted by dark side ordinance? And if it turns out to be ninety percent of the folks up and down Lenida, then probably we don't need a corum out. Uh, but if it's a relative, uh. Even if it's a majority, uh, even if it's, you know, fifty-five percent of the, uh. Businesses on Lenida, that, that's still, you know, it still strikes me that we, we might be able to tailor, um. Exemptions that, uh, take care of them, but as Brad points out, um. The other forty-five percent that, that are complying benefit their residential neighbors, uh, on Manzanita and on Dorcas and in between, and. Uh, you know, I don't want, if it, if it's going to be an enforcement nightmare, uh, or a, or a code drafting nightmare. Then let's figure that out and, and not go down that road, but, uh. At least for now, I, I, I feel like we ought to be able to. Zero in on, on the problem and figure out how big a problem it is, how big a challenge it is.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, uh, again, my, my preference still remains in the core. City because I've walked up and down Lenida at night and you get much past, um. We get to the old wind mirror and there's, there, it's not commercial or there, there are no, there are not a lot of lights, but you look at. The little apple and, and the businesses that are in the core. Uh, I think those lights are really, are, are really important. I think it brightens up the city. The other thing that occurred to me with help of some others is that. The Underhill Plaza is really solved by the fact that lights need to be dark skylights. You can have lights. They just to be that, that we can deal with. We really can't deal easily with dark skylights in the commercial district itself.
Yeah. Okay.
Oh, sorry, Brad, go ahead.
I just say there needs to be a little bit of a guideline or fence around exempt, instead of it being just a blanket exempt because, uh. You never know, we may have a business that says, okay, you're exempt now, and they're, let's light it up. We're going to add twenty more lights because I'm exempt, so. Not quite sure how to frame that, but, uh.
We'll leave that in the hands of our capable staff.
We'll try to figure out how we're going to figure out who, uh, who's adversely impacted, because. It's going to be, you know, you will have folks that'll say, I need my parking lot lit up like, you know, sun. And there are some parking lots that back into a residential zone and. So I I just started getting, I'm curious how we're actually going to figure.
In those parking lots, you can have dark sky, I mean, right now, they're not dark sky and they're pretty bright.
Right, I would argue the same about the commercial districts, but I, you know, I'm. However, you guys want to do it is fine, I do think the commercial district does have street lighting all down Lanita. And that's all dark sky, that faces downward. I I think we're really trying to avoid the situation that Brad described, right, by having everybody comply. I don't think through compliance, again, I'm agnostic, I whatever direction you want to go is how we'll go, but. I I don't think that means that Lanita will then be dark. It just means that if someone has a big old light bulb on the front of their building, they've just got to put a hat on it. Or get a new fixture that has something that's facing down, so it's just the light isn't facing up and it's not screaming outward. So I just want to make sure that, you know, that perception that it's going to be a dark street if we go dark sky that. I I don't actually believe that will be the case, what may be helpful. Is that we could take some pictures at night and see what it looks like. And identify, are there any current existing problem areas? And if not, that might be information enough for you all to decide. Yeah, let's go ahead and just make them comply, or oh, no, these lights are necessary for the safety of our. You know, I think safety is what I'm hearing from the councils being a driving factor to exempt it. So so that would be my suggestion, because if you did have lights lighting up your parking lot, they would just seem to be facing down, so. I want to make sure that your concerns are addressed, but I I don't think that the dark sky ordinance would. Limit people's ability to get to work early and. You know, I come to work when it's dark out all the time. And we still have light here, so I just want to make sure we're kind of all tracking on the same page with that, staff's happy to, I think that might be one way to do it. Is to look at, well, where are there, where would there be violations now, where would there be issues and. And we can come back and share, you know, we don't need to show the pictures, businesses that would be problematic, but we could maybe go out and inventory the problem. And then come back to you and start there as a as a start, I don't know.
I think that's a great idea, we we actually did that after dinner a couple nights ago, I said, we were. Down close to ocean, I said, let's just go up Lanita, and as we did, I was like. That won't be compliant, that won't be compliant, because it was. It was literally a floodlight pointing towards the street or some of them that are the the bigger like square with just a light in it. Again, like you said, you'd have to put a shield or something on that, but I I think that's your suggestion is a great approach.
Okay, and that that feels tangible, like we can do that. In a meaningful way, so why don't, why don't we do that, why don't we? Start by just sort of doing what Brad just did and. And coming back to you with a sort of summary of what we experienced and. Provide you some additional information for you to make an informed decision, and we can also have the revised ordinance. Prepared up to that point, and if you decide to have us further investigate. We can do that then. Okay, great.
Kathy, you're mute.
I would just add. And I'm, you know, pretty sure it does need to be said, but I'm going to say it anyway, to be done diplomatically. We would never go to some, take a picture of somebody's home here. Oh, sit up as the poster child for, ooh, bad floodlight, and you know, this is all perfectly fine how it is now. I don't know how many of these businesses even know that we're thinking about a change, so. Maybe it's an opportunity to invite people into the discussion and and get some perspective from them. While we're photographing, I mean, the visual does help, it sounds like, it sounds so simple, but it does help, and I guess I need to go for a walk. Since it gets dark so early now, I'll still be able to do that.
To do at the end of this meeting, oh, no, I, yeah, and thanks, Catherine, that's what I meant, is we're not going to show pictures of like, here's a violator. We'll just go and kind of get a sense of, oh, here's the issues that we're seeing, there are floodlights, okay, that's addressing the ordinance. By the fact they have to be off within ten seconds of turning on, or we noticed about fifteen different lights that were not compliant, you know, something like that, that's. That we're not, we would never want to put somebody on the spot for having. Lights that are not compliant with an ordinance that doesn't exist yet, so.
I guess my my biggest issue are the lights on the buildings, and I'm thinking about. Manzanita Jelly and the pizza place and a couple of other places down the line. So it in the, as you look at that, I think it would be really interesting. To get your take on is, are those compliant with dark sky, is there anything we can do? That would be helpful to make those dark sky, so if. Part of it, that'd be really helpful for me.
Sure, that's great, that's 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 something we can do, we will do. And then we'll work together to get back to you on a work session agenda soon. But otherwise, is your general consensus that, yeah, keep keep doing this?
Keep doing it, I I do want to, I know we talked a little bit earlier about the whole. Enforcement being complaint driven and therefore the need for education and all that, and maybe there's some kind of a. Ease in period, but. Mike, I have a couple of questions for you, one would be. With this kind of a an ordinance, you have any kind of a gut sense of how much education time would be. Fair to expect before you could kind of convert to more of a. Okay, everybody knows what the score is now, it's time to start enforcing, and then also, or second second question is. In those limited cases where we do have a hot issue between neighbors. Seems to me that once the ordinance is passed. Even if our general policy is to bring the community along slowly and educate. You still have an enforceable law if you need it on day one, if there's if there's a a real problem and someone is not. Complying, you you know. I don't feel like we we give a great, we give a grace period so everybody can get up to speed. On what the new ordinance means, we don't give a grace period to allow bad conduct to keep happening. For six months or nine months or whatever, so I. As law enforcement or Max's code enforcement, do you feel like you can? Sort of usher in a new ordinance with a ramp up period of public education, but still. Have it in your back pocket if you need to in a particularly hot instance.
Sure, I mean, I would have no problem issuing a citation to somebody who is egregious. Or intentional intentionally violating an ordinance. I think the educate, to answer your second question first, that that wouldn't be an issue, I I wouldn't need to talk about a grace period with. With folks that intentionally annoy, a lot of our ordinances talk about annoy or disturb others, I mean, it. There's there's not too much to talk about in that case when it it. It is somebody who's being intentional when they violate. So I I could certainly forego the education process of that. In those rare cases. To answer your first question. To have expectations of educating folks. I I don't see, I don't, I don't expect it to happen too much, I mean, pretty much people are, even if they didn't participate in the survey. They're still asking me on a weekly basis, where where is the city at with this ordinance? What do you plan to do and what are your challenges, so it's being talked about, I don't think it's going to come across as. As a strike one, strike two, strike three, you're out, it's. I I don't expect a town hall meeting on just the education, I I mean, people talk pretty. Pretty freely with me, so, and and all of our officers, so.
Well, good, that's good to hear, I ask because I think sometimes we. We deliberate about these things to a very small audience in meetings like this, and then we pass a resolution or we pass an ordinance. And for the first time, people are aware that there's something new on the books, this one sounds like there's been a little bit more of a. Ramp up.
Lead is time, yes.
All right, good.
And I think some of it up to Mike's discretion would be, you know, even. I don't know that we need to say if somebody's not compliant, they have to do this within three weeks, they have to get it fixed within six weeks, I think it's more of Mike saying. That's really bad, you've lit up your whole neighbor's house next door. Turn that light off. Until you have a chance to get a compliant fixture in place, there there isn't a timeline, it's just don't do this anymore.
Yeah, so my my approach always centers around the word reasonable, like what's reasonable? Like, how quick can we solve this, is Home Depot closed today, can we get this done within seven days, or this is an easy fix right now? Or or we could talk about enforcement measures, which would include include that monetary penalty or citation. And that'll get their attention.
So are we going to develop fines, or is it really going to be left to you, Mike, to?
As far as I know, we. I believe Max helped me out on this, if you would, as far as the current penalty for the short term ordinance. Ten dash three.
Yeah, so that one is a class C violation, that's five hundred dollars.
And so if we were to take this and and expand citywide, I I think that would be probably the the path that we would take, Linda.
Only for the egregious, it would be for people who weren't willing to work with you.
Yeah, we've exhausted all efforts of trying to gain compliance as 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 far as being reasonable to their neighbors and and. Whether their neighbors are residents or guests or homeowners or renters or businesses or whatnot.
Okay, thank you. So any other questions or comments? We're starting, Mike, all right, so we're sending it back to you. To look at the at the ordinance and then to potentially at the next workshop bring back the new ordinance updated and pictures. That allow us to look at the downtown area. That makes sense?
Yes, scrape photos, yes, we'll focus on that commercial zone.
We'll summarize what we learned from walking down the commercial zone, probably no photos.
So we're on to twenty is plenty, and again, that's Sergeant Mike and our code enforcement Max Robertson. So you guys are on.
Okay, so another survey, if we if we jump to the screen that has twenty is plenty. The second slide sort of talks about. Again, a timeline of where we started, this started with a conversation that. That happened on September thirteenth, twenty twenty three. City manager Leila Mon introduced the prospect of having the speed limit lowered to twenty miles an hour citywide. She requested staff map all existing speed, speed limits and speed limit signs within the city. I know that was part of Chief's project as well, I know Dan had some say so in some of that. Or excuse me, some input in some of those. Leila, I also requested, what does it take for us to legally do this and what what state ORS is allow us to to lower the speed limit? So we had some input from Chief on that as well, and then also on September thirteenth, we were talking about a consensus from the council to. Continue this by gathering information via public surveys, so like basically it comes down to, hey, yes or no, does the city, does the. Do do folks in the city taking this survey, how do they feel, should should we lower the speed limit or or not? And so we have about, again, six hundred full-time residents, about two hundred and fifty five respondents. A very large portion of those folks are homeowners, there's a few business owners. And then moving forward, the yeses and the nos. Pretty much eighty one percent of folks were in favor of of changing our our speed limits from twenty five to twenty. And and again, when we talk about speed limits that are twenty five, that that's like residential zones, so of course Lanita is is twenty mile an hour zone, it's a commercial zone. Typically set by the state, twenty miles an hour residential zones are typically set if they're not posted at twenty five miles an hour. And as you know, we've got some narrow streets in in Manzanita, so sometimes twenty five can seem a little fast and and some of our neighborhood. Some of our neighborhoods, I know that that survey did highlight a few of those streets in our neighborhoods. There were some comments on that, but overwhelmingly, it was, you know, eighty one percent of folks thought that that. They would support this change. Of course, safety, again, being the primary, that like the heavy hitter in this one, like a a lot of people just feel that if cars are going slower through our neighborhoods. And our commercial zones, that then it's going to promote a safer environment, especially when we're lacking some of those. Traffic control devices, you know, sidewalks or bicycle lanes, when we talk about the T S P. There's a lot of information there about bicycle lanes and sharing the road, and and not that everybody's riding bicycles, but. We have many roads that are just very narrow, so that doesn't leave a whole lot for us to work with other than maybe posting some signs in some of those. Neighborhoods that have the greatest concern, it may be lower that, but if we. Talk about specifically which streets were really present in that survey, the next slide. Does show that Third Street, Carmel Avenue, Manzanita Avenue. Dorcas Lane, Classic Street, that's that longer connection down to the State Park, Nacarney Boulevard. These were the sort of the most popular ones that were repetitive in in the people's comments. As far as, hey, these streets have been identified by those folks as as needing some sort of measure to make them more safe. More safe for drivers, more safe for pass, or excuse me, for folks that are walking, folks that are riding bicycles. Especially we have that time of the year in the summertime where where these streets can be really crowded because they're narrow, so. Again, from the survey. A lot of folks highlighted these these main streets here. So would, moving forward would be something that that council would want to think about, but just just bringing you. Only the the survey statistics of how many responded, what they responded, who they were and. Just a little bit of information regarding where they were talking about and the locations that that were concerning for them. So that's kind of what I got at this point after the survey.
Thanks, yeah, and I just asked Mike to summarize what we heard back from the community, we still are working on. Kind of getting your feedback and then determining, you know, should we continue down this path? And if so, then we have some work ahead of us to get all of our ducks around.
I definitely think it needs to continue forward. Leila, I know you mentioned, and I was actually living in Portland when they did this twenty is plenty for the residential neighborhoods. And I don't remember exactly, but I think it would be interesting for council as well as the public to be informed, there was a. A measurement that Portland put out that said in a automobile pedestrian collision. Their survivability or reduction in injury between twenty and twenty five. And don't quote me on this, but it was something significant, like seventy percent. It was, when I saw that number, I was like, wow, so I think it would be interesting to get that out to everyone so they know that. One other question is, I know within the golf cart ordinance. Golf carts are only allowed on streets within the city of a speed limit of twenty five miles or less. So it may be something to consider or think about if we have areas, I think going over towards the State Park, it may be thirty miles per hour. Down Carmel, so if that's changed to twenty. Just something to think about that that may expand the areas in which golf carts are allowed to be on the streets. Problem, but just something to think about.
I think it's pretty significant that eighty two percent of the respondents felt positive about the twenty mile an hour. And and certainly, I I support that, I think that's a great idea. Catherine, how do you feel about it? How do you feel about it?
No, I support this.
Jerry?
Yeah.
Yeah, I supported uh pri- primarily because uh I just see so many people walking, uh, and honestly. Uh, this is not a criticism of tourists, but I think tourists are particularly fond of walking in the middle of the street. Um. Uh, I drive a quiet car and it's amazing. I don't like to beat my horn, so I don't beat my horn, but sometimes. I get close to. Yeah, so, so uh, I think we live in a town where, A, we got a lot of walkers, that's a good thing, uh. Not as many folks on bikes, but we we certainly have a few. We got a lot of older people, uh, we got plenty of dogs on leashes and it's just. It just makes common sense. I mean, I don't. It'd be one thing if uh our current speed limits were twice what we're aiming downward towards, but if it's a. Relatively modest adjustment, particularly if it has the payoff that Brad is suggesting.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's a good idea, so. And I love the fact that eighty-one percent agree on it, cuz so far I haven't come across a lot of eighty-one percent issues.
I don't think we have anything else.
Well, I can't help myself, but I'm gonna share a map with you. Can you see that? Um, cuz you all just approved a second reading of this plan, and so, you know, I wanna be clear that it's not. Me that's making this happen, it's not um. Any one specific person. This is actually you as a body implementing a strategy that's based on. A significant amount of community outreach and input, and so. One of the things I wanna put together when we meet again is sort of, I I love doing map builds to tell stories, but the map that Mike showed. All those roads overlap with this map, which identifies future proposed. Uh, shareo, which is where a bike would actually have the full right to take a lane, which they legally can already. But there's, there's, there's measures that the city can put into place that cost money. Um, but that we can put into place that would help implement this vision that you have now adopted as part of the transportation system plan. And so reduction of speed limits is kind of our first foray into this dance, like to get the speed limits lowered. So I've had staff do is identify where along these particular roads, and then we were kind of really felt affirmed by what the community told us to. Which is, they identified all the roads that are on here already as being, this is where we wanna see folks slow down. We have to actually have signage up in order to enforce it, so we can say and apply it citywide, but if we don't have signage up. You know, Mike can't write a ticket or educate, he can educate people, but he can't write a ticket. And so, you know, we're not about writing tickets here, right? But we are about, I think. Enforcing this, cuz we're trying to change people's behavior. We're trying to change the way that people drive around in this town to make it more walkable. And bikeable. Um, we have what you call a uh yield roadway system, so. We are not in a a community that's set up to handle curves. We don't have the stormwater. Uh, infrastructure in place to be able to handle the runoff that's generated by sidewalks and curves. And frankly, you know, yield roadways, we're the kind of poster child for that, and the federal highway design guides. Um, guidelines, and so there are other relatively low-cost things that we can do as a as a city. To implement this vision here, and those are things like. The uh solar sign that we just put up on Classic, or the one that we have now on, have had on Lenita. Has had, and we can actually capture data from that, and we'll come back to you with some information about that as well, but. Those are some methods that we can put in place that are fairly low cost. It still costs something. So, you know, we are having these discussions about revenue diversification, for example, but having a. Funding source, for example, for transportation, it helps us implement this vision. Um, traffic calming measures that are actually fairly low cost relative to like a reconstruction of an entire street, so I'm talking about. You know, thermoplastic that identifies, that's the stuff that goes on the ground, that um. It's shiny and you can see it and it's white and it indicates a bike lane, or it indicates a stop sign. Um, we can put those down on sharos that have that sort of bike with the little Vs on it that indicate a bike can take a full lane here. Those things cost money, and so we have to be able to have resources that help us implement this vision and make this town more walkable and bikeable. So part of what uh we'll do as a staff is kind of, if we've done the research in terms of understanding what. Ordinance is um, what kind of steps we need to take to implement that. Uh, change, we can reduce speeds as a local authority by five miles per hour. Um, we do have jurisdiction over county roads, which we have quite a few in this town, um, but as long as they're in our city, we can. Control what those speed limits are and um. Come back to you with some measure of like, well, here's what we think it would take in order to implement this, cuz it's one thing to do it citywide and say we're doing this. It's quite another to then sign it and get the infrastructure in place to ensure. Folks' safety as they're walking and biking around this town, and that's that, that's what we can do at pretty low cost, but we again. Uh, need to start thinking about then how how are we gonna fund that, and so we'll we'll have some information on that as we move. If you guys want us to move forward, which I think you do, um, to come back to it.
That sounds.
Is, is some of the restricted T L T revenue possibly something we could tap for this? Because it could potentially be positioned as helping to make our tourists safer.
I love that question. Um, I think it's fairly fairly restricted, um. Trails are a possibility, um, but we're also facing some concerns about trails. And so I I I'll explore that, that's part of the additional work that still needs to be done. Um. That revenue source, which is the restricted funding that we have to promote tourism, um. We also use for other things, and so that really can't be sort of an ongoing source of. Source that we would want to use to put towards something like this, but it can help us do maybe a small uh trail project, but I I. I would need to do some more research to get back to you on whether or not it would be applicable to things like signs or thermoplastic or. Bike lanes. I'm not, I'm not sure if those those qualify, but I'm I'm happy to ask and find out.
Thank you.
You know, you have those signs where you have a picture of a deer or an elk, you could have a picture of tourists, uh. And then T L T could pay, I think.
Nice try, Jerry. Are there any other comments about the twenty is plenty? It sounds like there's consensus on the council. That we'd love to get more information, uh, do more research to begin to move this forward, so. Thank you for the work you've done so far. This is excellent, uh, and it's a really important and exciting project. So thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
So. So in that, I would come to the end. I I just wanna give an extra shout out to Mike and Max. For what they've done on the dark sky lighting. I mean, it's complicated, you've got a lot of audiences out there. It's hard to please everybody, but I think you've come really close, and so thank you for the work that you've done, both of you've done a great job, so thank you.
You're welcome. We will move forward.
Okay, that sounds great. All right, is there anything else that we need to discuss in this workshop? If not, I will close the workshop and uh wish everybody happy holidays. We'll see you next in. Two thousand twenty-four, believe it or not, so have a happy holiday and uh see ya next year.
Thanks.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, bye.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.